Good afternoon. I will call to order the May 22 meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Cronzer, Magrino, Bender, Slack, Sweetsie, Lipkeepier, and Freeland. At this time, I'll ask that you silence any mobile devices. And our first item of business is to approve the actions from the May 8 meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second to all in favor.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to sort the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items we will discuss and which will be considered on consent. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item one is the Rana Apartment Partial Public Alley Vacation at 2900 Pleasant Avenue. That is an application for an alley vacation. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one. We'll put that on consent. Item two is 1003 at 1,000 North Third Street. Several applications for modification to a building there. That application has been withdrawn, so we'll consider the withdrawal of item two. Item three is the MTN Bus Garage and Maintenance Facility at 4640 Lindale Avenue North. A conditional use permit and site plan review for a bus garage there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item three? See, no one will put item three on consent. Item four is the 816 Lowry Avenue Northeast Barbecue at 816 Lowry Avenue Northeast. That is a rezoning. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? See, no one will put item four on consent. Item five, let's see here. Item five is the Armitage Montessori School at 2501 West 56th Street. Two applications for an addition to a school. There is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item five? See, no one will put item five on consent. Item six is the Erickson Elementary School addition at 4315 31st Avenue South. Couple of applications for a school addition there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item six? See, no one will put that on consent. Item seven is the Kilimanjaro Reception Hall at 3021 Fifth Avenue South. Conditional use permit and a variance related to an event, a meeting hall there. We'll discuss item seven, so if anyone is here for that, we'll discuss it. Item eight is the NRRC House Rehab at 1303 Golden Valley Road. Couple of applications for reuse of an existing building. We'll continue item eight to the June 12 meeting, so if anyone is here to speak on item eight, that will be considered on June 12. Item nine is the Milwaukee Road Depot Banquet Center Expansion at 300 Washington Avenue South. Site plan review for an addition. There is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item nine? See, no one will put item nine on consent. Item 10 is Mosaic Phase Three at 1320 Lagoon Avenue, 1350 Lagoon Avenue, and 2900 Fremont Avenue South. Conditional use permit and site plan review for item 10, and we will discuss item 10. I know Commissioner Cronzer, you had a question about that one. Item 11 is the Marshall Street Apartments at 1301 Marshall Street Northeast and 107 13th Avenue Northeast. Several applications for a new mixed-use building there. We will discuss item 11. Just so I have a sense, how many of you are here to speak on item 11, if anyone? So, at least one person. So, we'll discuss item 11. Moving along, item 12 is 620 Olson Memorial Highway at 622 634 and 638 7th Avenue North. Actually, those are all addresses. Several applications for two new charter schools at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 12? See, no one will put item 12 on consent. Next, item 13 is Central Lutheran Church at 333 South 12th Street. Several applications for an addition to a church building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 13? See, no one will put item 13 on consent. Item 14 is the University Lutheran Chapel Expansion at 316 10th Avenue Southeast. Several applications for building addition there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 14? See, no one will put that on consent. And finally, item 15 is the Holiday Station Store, number 461, at 1624 Washington Avenue Northeast. Applications for a new convenience store there. We'll discuss item 15, if anyone is here for that. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 9, 12, 13, and 14 will be on consent. We'll discuss items 7, 10, 11, and 15. We'll continue item 8 to June 12, and item 2 has been withdrawn. May have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second to all in favor. And that motion carries. There is no committee of the whole consent agenda today, so we can move along. Next, may have a motion to continue item 8 to the June 12 meeting. We have a motion and a second to all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, may have a motion to accept the withdrawal of item 2. We have a motion and a second to all in favor. And that motion carries. Item 2 has been withdrawn. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 9, 12, 13, and 14. Is anyone wishing to speak on any of those items? See, no one. I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second to all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion, and our first item for discussion is item seven, and staff is Ms. Sather. We do have four items for discussion today, so I just will ask that we're all respectful of each other's time, and we have a brief presentation.
Item number seven on today's agenda is for the properties at 3021 and 3025 5th Avenue South. The existing property is the Kilimanjaro Restaurant. They occupy the first floor of the building. The second floor is intended at storage, is what was previously approved in 2010. You'll see on the second page of your staff report, there are previous approvals to allow for parking lot improvements, including a rezoning on the south lot at 3025 5th Avenue South. That property is owned R2B. There are a total of eight parking stalls approved. What you're seeing here in front of you is the previously approved site plan from 2010. That site plan is not presently in conformance, however. Zoning enforcement is aware, and we'll make sure that those site improvements are made for the property. Since opening the restaurant, the applicant has now identified the need to expand the business, to add some additional seating upstairs. So, the additional seating would be used for a reception or meeting hall. The property is owned C2, a reception or meeting hall requires a conditional use permit in the C2 district. In addition to the conditional use permit, the proposed project is approximately 10 spaces short of what would be allowed to authorize the quantity of occupants. I believe that the current count is about 127 occupants. So, in order to comply with the zoning code requirement, they would have to reduce occupancy by 44 occupants or apply for the variance, which they have done so today. So, I've shown here on this map how they're providing their off-street parking. So, they have provided a shared parking agreement. The application is presently incomplete for the property at 500 East Lake Street. There are approximately 24 spaces that they have shown on the site plan that is also included in your packet, four of which would be, or three of which would be for the existing restaurant at East, or 500 East Lake Street. The remainder, 20 spaces, would be used for the reception or meeting hall. At the north end of the site, that's on the same zoning lot, they have 11 spaces, and that's shared with the existing Kilimanjaro Restaurant. When asked if the applicant plans on operating both uses at the same time, they indicated that they would have both the restaurant and reception meeting hall operating simultaneously on occasion. And then the parking lot that was approved previously in 2010 allows for eight spaces at the south, at 3025 5th Avenue South. This planning commission approved recently an expansion of the property across the street at 419 East Lake Street, and that included a parking ramp. There is no formal or informal agreement to allow for any off-site parking at that parking ramp. The parking ramp is presently under construction, but recently, the owner of that parking ramp just authorized a new land use that would use up a number of those spaces, as well as the existing shopping center. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit per the findings found in the staff report. However, staff is recommending denial of the variance based on the following findings. First, staff was unable to determine a practical difficulty that warranted the exception to reduce the off-street parking by an additional 10 spaces. The applicant has taken advantage of onsite parking, both adjacent on the north lot and the south lot, shared parking with the property at 500 East Lake Street, and utilized the bicycle incentive, and is still come up approximately 25% short of what their minimum off-street parking would be required. Staff is not able to find that unique circumstances were created by anything due to the parcel of land, and instead have been created by the applicant's desire to maximize the occupancy of the reception or meeting hall and operate the restaurant at the same time. Staff has communicated to the applicant additionally that so much of the parking in an uncoordinated fashion may lead to confusion for potential users of the reception or meeting hall. We have asked that they evaluate the potential of valet parking option where you can focus the incoming traffic and allow for parking at these different locations, but they have not indicated that they will be using valet for any of those patrons. So, finally, we have also, in the past, also asked many of the reception or meeting halls to provide a travel demand management plan to really identify what is to be more applicable travel demand for the proposed use at this particular site. The applicant declined to do that as well. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions that they record the conditional use permit and comply with the minimum off-street parking requirement, and therefore recommending denial of variance, item B, to reduce the parking by 10 spaces that is required. With that, I can take any questions.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Shannon, I might just ask a question briefly. So, would it be customary to grant a parking variance in a situation like this if the applicant were able to demonstrate that they had formal arrangements to provide, either through valet or had a formal arrangement to use parking spaces that are nearby in a different lot?
President Brown, I'd say that is accurate. Valet is one of the, oh, one, I'm sorry. Reception or meeting halls are one of the few uses where it may make sense to allow for an administrative approval through valet. However, we have seen a reception or meeting hall still require the variance before, so it comes to mind, they were using valet, and that was a justification for granting the variance in that case.
All right. Are there any further questions? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing for this item, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. If there's someone who can speak on behalf of the applicant. Hi. Please state your name and address.
Yes, I'm Jeff McElmurray, and I'm here representing the owner. And basically, she summed it up quite well. What we're looking at, in addition to the parking that we've secured at 500 East Lake Street, is there are two or three other properties that we're currently looking at. One is at the North Star Storage Facility. One is at the Urban League, just across the street and a little bit south. And then, of course, that parking ramp that she mentioned across the street. But all of those are sort of tentative right now. I think there's a zoning issue with that storage property, and so they're trying to work that out. I think the zoning changed on that, and so to allow parking for us on the zoning as it currently is would be a problem. The other thing that the owner has said is that we could reduce the occupancy of that rental hall until such time that we are able to identify where we can get the additional 10 parking spaces. So, we'd open with fewer, like, I think it's 83 or somewhere in that range, seats for the rental hall, and then as we identify parking in the future, then increase that to like 128, 130.
All right. Are there any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, we can move on to any other speakers. Is anyone else wanting to speak on this item? See, no one. I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have the two applications before us. Shannon, I might just ask you to clarify. It seemed like the applicant is maybe willing to reduce the capacity of the reception hall until he is able to meet that parking requirement. If that were the case, would you suggest we consider approving just the conditional use permit with the condition that the applicant meets the off-street parking requirement, and then also deny the variance, so that issue can be sorted out at a later date?
President Brown, that is what staff is suggesting. Of all of the alternatives the applicant has so far proposed, that is the only option where they would be able to meet the off-street parking requirement and the requirements in the zoning code for off-site parking.
Okay.
Thank you.
In that case, are there any other questions, or would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Slack?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item A, conditional use permit.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve item A with the two stated conditions. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lipkeepier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
7-0.
And that motion carries. Next, we have item B, variance. Commissioner Slack?
I make a motion to approve staff recommendation to deny the variance for the reduced minimum off-street parking.
We have a motion and a second to deny item B, the variance to reduce minimum off-street parking. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lipkeepier?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
7-0.
All right, and that motion carries, and that concludes our discussion on item seven. Our next item for discussion is item 10. That is Mosaic, 1320 Lagoon Avenue. And Commissioner Cronzer, I believe you had a question pertaining to the drop-off area and landscaping. Maybe you could ask that of staff, and Ms. DeBoer can focus her presentation on that.
Sure. I'm just curious what the thinking is behind the passenger drop-off that eats into the boulevard space, which removes, further removes green space from the site?
So, the intent is really more for a loading zone on-street instead of passenger drop-off. However, obviously, it could also be used as that. Going back to 2013, when this phase of the planning and development was first proposed, they had had a garage door loading zone off of Fremont, which widened the curb cut. And then, in conversations with Public Works, we asked them to eliminate that additional curb cut and look at on-street loading. And so, this has been worked out with Public Works as far as having the on-street loading. And the reason to move it in is the width of the street doesn't allow it to stay, it doesn't allow, the width of the street doesn't allow one on-street without renegotiating travel lanes. And so, this is the result of many conversations to try to get an additional loading space for the project.
Is it loading for people or loading for goods?
I'm sorry?
Is it, what's it loading for?
For goods coming into and out of the building.
And what kind of vehicles are they loading?
Trucks. But not, I don't believe semis, but it would be your FedEx, your UPS.
Does it really need to be 80, 90 feet long? It's just, if it's just for UPS, those kinds of vehicles, those are in the 35-foot range. It seems like it's twice as big as it needs to be.
We could re-ask Public Works.
Yeah. Plus, with the bridge closed, it's really, you're not getting a lot of vehicles south anyway, so turning around somehow to get there, it seems excessive to me.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on this item. I might ask the applicant to speak first, and if you don't mind stating your name and address for the record, and addressing anything else you'd like to.
Frank Clark with the Akerberg Group.
All right. And is there anything else you'd like to add, or maybe you'd just like to kind of respond to Commissioner Cronzer's question about the rationale behind the location and size of that loading zone?
Sure, absolutely. And I, you know, your point's taken. I think we've looked at it a lot of different ways. The other piece of that is Metro Transit has a lot of traffic going through there as well, so it's allowed, allowing for navigating some of those. You had a lot of buses at certain peak hours traveling through there, so that was another consideration that was taken into effect with that.
Maybe explain why so long? It looks like you could fit three UPS trucks in there.
Yeah, I think we can look, I mean, capacity-wise, it was to get trucks in there, and, you know, if you have two loading, you don't want somebody in the street, especially with the Metro Transit interaction on the north side of that. It was more for a peak situation, not intended to have, you know, the intent isn't to have people sitting there all day with a ton of cars. But if we do have, say, you have two UPS trucks coming in, and you have a bus coming along, we want to avoid that conflict.
All right. Are there any further questions of the applicant? Hearing none, we can move on to any other speakers. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have two applications before us, a conditional use permit for the PUD, as well as a site plan review. Commissioner Cronzer?
Yes, I make a motion to move, A, the conditional use permit based on staff recommendation, and the site plan with the three stated conditions.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit, as well as the site plan review. Commissioner Cronzer?
Yeah, I would just ask the applicant to take another hard look at this drop-off, and maybe plant a few more boulevard trees, and reduce that by half or so.
All right. That is noted. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lipkeepier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
7-0.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item 10. Our next item for discussion is item 11, and staff is Ms. Smith.
Did we approve A and B?
Yes, we did. Both in the same motion. 1301 Marshall Street Northeast.
Good evening, President Brown and Commissioners. The site before you is 1301 Marshall Street Northeast, and also 107 13th Avenue Northeast. So, there are two parcels. They're about one-half acre in size, and they're located at the northeast corner of 13th and Marshall Street in Northeast. Currently, there is an auto sales and repair shop on the site, and also a single-family dwelling. There's a one-story commercial building directly to the north of the site, and then across the alley, there are low-density residential uses. The site is also located kitty-corner to the Grain Belt Brewery complex, and it's across the street, just to the north of the Grain Belt Apartments. The Mississippi River is about 1,000 square feet to the west. I mean, sorry, just 1,000 feet, not square feet, to the west. The existing zoning is I-1 light industrial. The general area contains a mix of commercial uses, a large range of residential densities, and light industrial uses. The applicant is proposing a six-story building with 70, with 70 feet as measured from the adjacent grade. There would be 95 dwelling units, about 3,400 square feet of commercial uses. The slide is incorrect. It's actually 3,400 square feet. And 54 onsite parking spaces that would be located both at grade and in a below-grade parking structure. The below-grade parking would be accessed off of a new curb cut on Marshall, and then the one-story parking garage would be accessed off of the alley that's off of 13th Avenue. Here are some renderings to look at. This is a view from the Grain Belt Apartments across the street. This is the view from 13th. And this is the view from Marshall. And since the committee of the whole meeting, which was actually last year, the applicant has changed the render, has changed the design of the building to include active uses along 13th Avenue. So, this would be mostly residential amenity space, but also the ground-floor commercial space fronts both 13th and Marshall Street. The required applications include rezoning from I-1 to C-3A, a conditional use permit to increase the maximum height from four stories to six stories, a variance to increase the maximum FAR, a variance to reduce the minimum required parking for the non-residential uses from seven to zero, a variance to increase the maximum percentage of compact parking spaces that may be used to fulfill the residential parking requirement, and also three setback variances, which I'll explain later, and then site plan review for the new building. The, so for the rezoning request, the applicant is requesting to go from I-1 to C-3A, the Community Activity Center. An activities, this, this parcel is adjacent to a community corridor, and it's also located within the Grain Belt Activity Center. Activity centers are guided in the future land use map and comprehensive plan to bring a mix of uses that would have a citywide and regional draw, and a high intensity of uses that could include commercial employment and residential uses. So, this is one of several activity centers throughout the city. Actually, I'll just go back one, one, to make one point. The Shared and Neighborhood Small Area Plan was passed in 2014, and as part of that plan, they have changed the future land use guidance from commercial and low-density residential to mixed use for this particular site, and that was to allow for more redevelopment of the area. So, based on that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request. For the height and bulk requests, as I mentioned, there's both a conditional use permit for height and a floor-area ratio variance, and those are summarized in this slide. The general area, again, includes a wide range of uses, and the future land use map calls for an activity center, mixed use development here, and it's adjacent to a community corridor. The section drawing provided by the applicant shows how the proposed building would line up next to the Grain Belt site. So, the Grain Belt, the tallest point of that building is 138 feet above grade. The principal roof lines of that building vary between 74 feet and 100 feet, while the proposed building would be about 70 feet above grade. The shadow study submitted by the applicant shows that there would be some shadowing effects just to the residential properties to the east one hour before sunset, but there would be a very limited impact on other uses and other properties in the area at other times of day. The property to the north is a one-story garage, and the majority of the bulk of the building is actually concentrated towards the intersection rather than towards the north. is actually concentrated towards the intersection rather than towards the northeast corner of the site, because the northeast corner of the site would contain the one-story parking garage, so that helps to minimize the shadowing effects and manage bulk and height on the site. Staff is recommending approval of both of these requests. For the parking variances, the minimum parking requirement for the residential uses is forty-seven, and the applicant is proposing to fill that with fifty-four parking spaces. The applicant is proposing zero parking spaces for the commercial uses, while seven are required, so that's one of the variances, and then there's also the compact parking spaces variance. The residential parking requirement is not ninety-five, because it is located within a quarter-mile of high-frequency transit, so the eleven route runs along Second Street Northeast, and so the development does qualify for the fifty percent reduction, so only forty-seven are required while there are ninety-five dwelling units. And then the applicant is also proposing to comply with the bicycle parking incentive to reduce the commercial parking requirement from eight to seven. And staff finds that, given the grade change on the site and also the policy guidance for the area, it would be difficult to provide additional parking without further expanding the size of the building and further increasing the gross floor area height and setbacks, setback encroachments, I should say. And this outlines the setback variances that are required. So because of the adjacent residential use to the east, which is setback seven feet from the front property line, the site is subject to a seven-foot setback requirement along the south property line for the easternmost twenty-five feet. Otherwise, there are generally no setback requirements in commercial zoning districts. There are also, there is also a setback requirement for the building walls containing residential windows, so that's for floors two through six. So along the north side, the requirement is fifteen feet, the applicant is proposing nine-point-five feet, and then the applicant is also proposing to have a setback of two feet along the east property line, which is adjacent to the alley. And staff is recommending approval for all of the variances. And this just shows you, just to remind you of how the building looks in context, this is where the front yard requirement is, it's a seven-foot to zero. And I guess I didn't include the other, the other angles. So site plan review is also required for the development. There are four areas of site plan review that require alternative compliance. There is alternative compliance requested along the western elevation along Marshall, because it exceeds eight feet in area away from the front property line, staff recommends granting approval. There are blank walls along the first floor along the north side that is next to the parking garage, and also along the eastern building wall that's next to the exercise room for the residential uses. And staff recommends granting alternative compliance along the north building wall, but not along the east building wall, and recommends a condition of approval that the applicant be required to comply with eliminating the blank walls on the east elevation. Staff recommends granting alternative compliance for the number of exterior materials exceeding three per elevation. And finally, we recommend granting alternative compliance for the ground-floor active functions. So along Marshall Street, there would be required to be seventy percent active uses, and because of the parking garage entrance, it's only fifty-three percent active. Here are the street frontage elevations. The primary exterior materials that the applicant is proposing are primarily cementitious-based materials. There are, there's face brick and also cast stone along the ground-floor street frontages, and then along the north and east frontages, ground floor, there would be burnished block. And they're proposing to exceed the minimum window requirement on all four sides of the building. This is the view from the north and east. Staff recommends approval of all applications with four key conditions, making sure that the ground-floor non-residential uses do not go below three thousand square feet in area, also requiring a decorative fence between the building and the north property line, so there isn't a dead space, just to mitigate that dead space. We'd also recommend that, as proposed, there would be no fewer than four bicycle parking spaces, but the applicant is already proposing twelve in the adjacent right-of-way, and then also removing the blank wall on the east elevation. There are four, there are three comments in your packets tonight. The, a representative from the Shared and Neighborhood Organization has submitted comments based on a previous version of the project. It's not based on the current iteration of the project, but it's substantially the same, and the main concern has to do with the parking variance. There are two other comments also included that are opposed, that express opposition to the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to speak first, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Carol Lansing, an attorney at Figury Baker Daniels, representing the developer CPM companies. With respect to, and Dan Oberpriller with CPM is here, as is Scott Nelson, so if you have questions about anything to do with the architecture or site plan, Scott's here to address those. I wanted to speak to the applications. For the rezoning, activity centers are intended for the C-3A zoning district and for high or very high-density development. There's nothing in the Shared and Neighborhood Plan, Small Area Plan, that specifically guides this site for height or density or for zoning district, so there's nothing that says C-1 is preferable to C-3A. The guidance that is in that plan is for activity center. The, and also, there's no guidance in that plan with respect to height of three-year other stories, so really relying on the activity center and community corridor guidance. The purpose of the Grain Belt Activity Center is to bring not just a mix of uses, but a lot of residential use to this area to help support the Grain Belt complex. It'll also support neighboring businesses just outside of the activity center, like the food building and the artists in the area. These are concerns that have been raised understandably by the neighborhood group. We think this is a benefit to all of those uses. With respect to height and floor-area ratio, again, the activity center policies that support the C-3A zoning, we believe, support the six stories and the proposed size of the building. I'll note that on the east side of this block, across the alley, is R4 zoning, and that allows a height limit of fifty-six feet. The site slopes uphill towards that R4, so the back of this building, measured from alley grade, is about sixty-three feet, so we think the combination of slope and height and zoning districts provides a good transition as well as that one-story garage area in the northwest corner. Parking, I want to clarify our request. The request is as it appears in your agenda and the staff report. We're not asking for a variance of just one space, because it's not really feasible to put the commercial parking in the garage. So what we're proposing is that there are fifty-three spaces in the garage, and that will serve the residents, so there'll be six extra spaces over the parking requirement for residents in the garage, and we're asking for a parking variance from seven to zero for the restaurant. This is kind of a trade-off, then, of having a restaurant or retail use in this building in place of a couple of residential units. We wouldn't need a variance if there was no, with the proposed design and units, if there was no retail, but we think the restaurant is a great amenity for the area. And we can't go deeper on this site because of soil conditions, so adding a level of underground parking isn't feasible either. We believe that there is adequate on-street parking to serve the restaurant. We distributed a parking survey to you that was done after the planning commission meeting on the other project out the Fourteenth and Marshall corner. I'll note for you that since the planning commission meeting, that project's been revised to reduce the unit count so that there's no parking variance required for the Fourteenth and Marshall project at all anymore. This parking survey was done on a Thursday and a Saturday at several times throughout those days, and it showed that within a two-block area, there's two-hundred-and-eighty-plus on-street parking spaces, and that at any time during that survey, there were a hundred that were unused. So this is why we believe that the existing on-street parking will be sufficient to address the restaurant's needs. In conclusion, the C-3A zoning is entirely consistent with the guidance for this area, as it is a very-high-density project. The height and size of this building is consistent with what has been approved in activity centers throughout the city, and we request, hopefully, that you will approve these applications. If you have any other questions for me or for the project team, we're here.
All right, Commissioner Reland?
How does this benefit the Grain Belt company?
The idea of activity centers is that you have a lot of, you know, that you have a lot of residents there that will support any uses in the activity center and surrounding areas, so it provides places for people to live who might work in the complex, it provides residents who will use, you know, patronize artists that are in the complex, and we know that the city's looking to do some redevelopment on the surface parking lot across the street, so, you know, again, any retail or employment uses in that complex will be benefited by having, living people and places to live nearby.
Have you explored the use of the parking lot across the street?
The city intends that for redevelopment.
And if we deny the variance for parking from seven to zero, what does that do to your project?
I don't know what decision would be made, if that's been contemplated, whether it means you can't support the retail. I don't know if there's a feasible way to, if you think about a secure garage and restaurant patrons coming to that site and their cars and access mixing with the residents, whether it's feasible to provide a way to use the garage for retail that wouldn't interfere with the secure area for the residents. I mean, I guess they would look at that. I don't know if, you know, another question would be, would the retail users use it instead of just parking on the street anyway?
Thank you.
Right, Commissioner Kronzer?
Hi, is your client explored using valet for the restaurant parking?
I think, you know, at first, they looked, they thought about the idea of, there's this surface parking lot across the street, and they thought that could be used. So if there was a place where valet was, you know, off-site was available, I think they would do that. Do you want?
Commissioners, Daniel Oberpriller, Principal at CPM. The, there's plenty of, in my opinion, the lot across the street holds about a hundred and thirty cars, and it is going to come out, I heard it was coming out for RFP for redevelopment sometime. So, but with that said, there's a number of parking places around this community within two blocks, the Greco Lot, the Library, Northeast Bank, so when it comes down to running valet, I think we have plenty of options to do so with flat surface lots along Marshall.
All right, and Commissioner Slack?
You have a two-part question, and they're more technical, so maybe the architect. The first is the east setback adjacent to the driveway. It's, the image that's up on the screen is a little misleading, because it appears that there's very, very little room there. It appears that the driveway is at the edge of the building. So just wondering, you know, what kind of conversations were had with Public Works regarding that? And that site, everything, everything in this area of the city drains to the river, and so it appears that everything's going to drain across your driveway into the back of the building, and just trying to see the curbing and how the curbing is defined, you know, more on the north side, and are you essentially trying to bring water as close to the building as possible? Because that's the way the curb looks, and as it wraps around on the north side, just can you explain how stormwater might, might move on the site as it relates to that?
Thank you, Commissioner. Scott Nelson with DJR Architecture. And again, I'm not, I'm the architect, not the civil engineer, but I think that the design of our, of our building, that we're two feet off the parking, or off of the alley line until we get back here, and then we'll step back a little bit, and then, I think the notion was, this little bit of surface in here would actually drain back down the alley, as it currently does. So it's very little, there's like impervious or pervious space where we have these, the generator and the transformer, that's about it.
So there, you think they're currently designed to drain back towards the alley?
Correct. I think we discussed this briefly at the PBR meeting.
And then, the purpose of the curb is it wraps on the north side of the building? Is it just to keep water away from the, if you slide the drawing down a little?
Yeah, the, you're talking about this?
Yep.
Bit of concrete gutter here, that's so that any water draining coming out of the neighbor's property wouldn't actually, or on our side, we're actually taking some of his water and draining it around to the alley, so it wouldn't come into our side. Then on the other direction it goes, this is all a grass area on the north side of the building, but that actually slopes down towards Marshall by, from Marshall up to the corner, it's like an eight-foot slope.
So is there actually a, like a valley in the driveway?
I think that's, yes, a little bit of a curb that would enable the water, so it wouldn't come up against our building.
So technically, would Public Works ever allow us to allow private water to drain back into a public right-of-way? At least, I know projects I've worked on, they haven't been allowed to do that, whereas it appears here that with the curb openings, that the water, at least in those two small areas, is draining back towards the alley, and maybe there, you know, they're not very big areas.
No, they're small areas, those were discussed when we had our PBR meeting.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay, Commissioner Magrino?
There, I think you mentioned it briefly, and I think you also mentioned it when we were talking about the other project on this block. Were there some soil issues with this site? Could you talk a little bit about that specifically and what that issue was, and how this may be changed from committee of the whole to now?
Yeah, so commissioners, we've been through this project probably three or four design iterations. That's why it's taken a year to get back to you on figuring it out. There's quite a bit of slope from Marshall up to the alley, and I do believe, are we widening the alley?
By two feet.
We're widening the alley by two feet. The property ownership, for whatever reason, we own half the alley, so that's generally not usually the case in the deal, but it's a small, it's a twelve-foot alley opposed to a fourteen-foot alley, and so there's quite a bit of slope. So we've tried to design this project with an underground basement, and unfortunately, digging it up with environmental conditions, because it used to be a gas station, as well as contamination, that's unfeasible, as well as the soil conditions cannot hold the loads with an underground basement without helical piers or some type of other foundation that makes the project for this product in this area unfeasible. So we designed most of the parking on-grade and above-grade in like a scissor concept, although all of the parking is covered, so there's no on-grade parking per se. It is on-grade in terms of the street coming off the alley at a high point and coming off the basement from the front, or on-grade off of Marshall from the front.
The, and also, I can add to Dan's comment, the parking garage sits on the north side of site, the worst part of the soil was actually in this area here, which is kind of out in front where the gas station was, so that's actually high, though, that's our floor slab, the garage slab slopes down a little bit while the garage slab up slopes over the top of it in a scissor concept, but lowering, because initially, we looked at areas that had parking on both sides of this with some more commercial on this side, but we really had issues if we went down on this zone of the property.
And besides, I'd like to stay out of the water table.
Thanks, that's helpful.
Thank you.
All right, are there any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers. I know we have at least one person who'd like to speak on this item, so if you'd like to come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Chair Commissioners, my name is Jenny Fortman, I live at fifteen fifteen Grand Street, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Shared and Neighborhood Organization, who is currently having their community meeting, so many of the people who would have been interested in being here were unable to attend. So just starting from the top, the site is currently actually I- So just starting from the top, the site is currently actually I-1 and C-1, is my understanding. The car lot is C-1 and the home is I-1. We have, for many years, encouraged the owner of that home to work with the neighborhood to rezonate it because they had to pay excessive permits, et cetera, for having such an intensive zoning where their home is. But that's my understanding of the current zoning. And the neighborhood would actually encourage the rezoning of the entire site to C-1. With regard to our small-area plan and whether or not it has specifications in there, we were actually very specifically instructed not to be too prescriptive with our small-area plan and not to include specific types of zoning. So in discussions, we were talking about C-1, but we were thinking, because we recognize the need to add density, that seems like the right level of density to the community, and we want to do a mixed-use in order to maintain a well-balanced neighborhood with housing and retail opportunities and different business opportunities. We do appreciate that the developer wants to infill development here. One of our goals as a community is to maintain many, as many of the existing buildings as possible, to retain affordability for homes and, and for businesses. And it's much easier to do that while reusing, reusing an old building. But in order to reuse an old building, we have to make a lot of exceptions there. That's why we have a higher expectation of a new construction that is actually managed and provide resources for the demands it is creating. So for that reason, C-1 is a more appropriate scale of development. The developers mentioned that they did a traffic study and that they found approximately 100 street spaces available at any given time. They are actually proposing two developments on either end of this block that are both the same size, and if both move forward, they will absorb both, all of those street spaces this year. And that means that there won't be spaces available for the business that they're putting in, let alone, again, during our small-area planning. We had businesses state in the survey, one of the main concerns of the businesses was the lack of available street parking. Is there a way to turn that on?
Yep, they'll turn it on. You can turn it 90 degrees.
Like that?
That's upside down, other way.
The other 90 degrees?
Yep. There you go.
So that is just a picture I took on my way home from work. And as you can see, I guess we can go into some other things. Another reason why we feel that the six-story building is, is not a good use is, if you look here, that building that you see is the Grain Belt Brewery at the front, and then the Grain Belt Apartments at the backside. That is a four-story building. But because that street raises a full story in grade, it looks like a much bigger building. There are about 200 yards between that building and the Grain Belt, whereas the current development we're looking at is about 30 feet from the Grain Belt and two stories taller than that. So that's another concern of the community, that just the massing of this proposal will actually diminish the iconic stature of the Grain Belt. And that's, and because the Grain Belt's such, obviously, an iconic and important feature of our community, the quality of the building materials and the aesthetic of the building are going to be very important. I know we haven't gotten to that point so far. But this does illustrate the fact that this, the Grain Belt Apartments put one space per unit, left half of it for, for visitors, and have had to convert all of it to resident parking because of the demand. Even with that demand, there is still this much parking on the street. I would say that was four in the afternoon. So, so the neighborhood is C-1. Conditional use, obviously, is moot because we just don't think that a 70-foot building belongs there. The variance to increase the floor-area ratio, again, it's just, it's too much mass for the site, and it's a lot of the massing, a lot of the design actually creates some of the hardships that they're asking for variances. For example, the parking. If they just eliminated more units, then they wouldn't require a parking variance. And with regard to the back alley, the alley is narrow. The, the adjacent property to the east has a retaining wall, and the parking lot to the Grain Belt is actually directly adjacent. So it's, it's going to be very tricky how to manage that. Again, hopefully, they will work with us and the neighbors to find a good way to circulate traffic. But given the fact that we actually haven't seen this plan, I don't really know how this plan addresses any of these concerns. The developer also mentioned our four zoning that's on Grand Street. The, the small-area plan actually does address that. We requested that that be changed back to residential in the plan. So I guess, I don't know. Do you have any questions for me? I get, well, let me say one more thing. We are appealing the, the rezoning and conditional use for the property that's one block down, and that appeal won't be heard now for another month. So it would probably make sense to put this out, because I feel like the, what happens on that end is probably going to affect what happens on this end. But we're trying to work with the developer to try and find something that's going to work for the community. We're just looking for them to reduce the impact and essentially just reduce the density to something that's more appropriate to the site.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Sweets, did you have a question?
Yeah, before you step back, I'm guessing the answer to this is no, but does it matter to the neighborhood organization that this is, this parking variance is related to the non-residential use versus the residential use?
Well, the demand is the demand, right? So, I mean, the fact that they get to take away half, you know what I mean, the one-to-one ratio, and now they're down to 50-some parking spaces, they're already, we know from experience that this is going to create demand. So in that sense, no, it doesn't matter. I mean, we, we are really grateful they want to put an actual commercial use in the building. The other, the other building, they're asking for a mixed-use zoning and putting no mixed-use in it, but, but I think that there's inadequate parking.
All right. And it doesn't look like we have any other questions for the speaker, so we can move on to anyone else. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Heidi Sigraspo. I live at 1414 Sixth Street. I am in agreement with Jenny Fortman on many of these things. It does not, there, if you, if you look at the area around the building, there is no of the C-3A zoning anywhere around there, so to bring it to that would be ridiculous. Moving up, it just, it looks like this whole project is, I'm just going to put my building where I want to put it, whether or not it fits the site or not. With all the different variances that are going on, it doesn't fit the site. With the conditional use permit, with trying to make it six stories high, where it is going to diminish what the Grain Belt office, the Grain Belt complex looks like, it's not good. The parking, I don't know who did their study, I missed who she said did the study, but on a given night, if you walk around in that neighborhood, there is no parking. Young Jonies went in during the winter, and there is certainly no parking. So I don't understand that at all. On top of that, I personally am concerned about the fact that there is no mixed income on this project. Northeast has traditionally been a blue-collar neighborhood, and alls we keep doing is getting more and more apartments that are more unaffordable to people. And I know a lot of people on this commission are probably going to think, well, the more we build, the better it's going to get. But I also know that this particular company, CPM, does go around buying the houses in that neighborhood, and they actually do own 1,300 grand right now. And from my understanding, they went into that house, did nothing more than really just pull up the carpet and jack the rents from about $700 a month to 13 hot dollars, $1,300 a month. So that is not creating affordable housing, that is making it worse for people. So somehow, this, this needs to give where, I don't know, at city council or on some level, they need to make it so there is affordable housing for people, because there's too many people being kicked out by projects like this that aren't taking into account what the neighborhood needs and what the people, the city, needs. They're just taking into account what goes into their pocketbooks. And I think that's pretty much all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Peter Bergerini. I live at 3055 22nd Avenue South. I just want to, I guess, speak to a couple of things here. First of all, the parking, the previous speakers mentioned, they don't feel the reduction in parking is fair because of the transit incentive. That's been a settled issue that was passed quite a while ago. We don't need to relitigate that every single time a project comes before you. That is the current standard for parking. It's the ordinance. We don't need to have a discussion about it. I'm also amused that this building, which is on a vacant lot, is displacing, displacing people. Is there any homes there currently? All right, well, track that then.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we have several applications before us, nine in total. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff, which is just what the timeline is for the approval clock on this, and just acknowledging that we did just have an appeal for a project down the street with the intention of allowing more time for the community to work with the developer team to make changes to the project. So I just, it's maybe something to consider here, rather than going through an appeal process, which maybe seems inevitable. So, that's just a question.
Council member Bender. So this item has been continued from the May 8th meeting, and so at that time, we sent out an extension letter. So right now, there is a 120-day clock running, and that expires on August 12th. And yes, you would, it would be, it would be within that, if we continued one more cycle, you would still be safely within the 120-day period with an appeal.
All right. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. It's not that we want to put the neighborhood to the pain of another appeal, but we do feel that working with both projects together for an ultimate resolution is what's going to happen, and it will be more easily done at the appeal stage, because your decision will have been made, and then we know what we're working with. If, if this gets continued, then it can't, it's sort of like, you have to go to the appellate court separately, and, and you don't have the ability to really deal with them both at once.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions, or would someone like to start us off with a motion for a discussion? Sure. Commissioner Verland.
Yes, I, I do find the neighborhood concerns compelling about mass, the mass of this and parking, and, and I, I would love to see some more work on it. And again, this is a very special place in our city, and I don't know if this building is helping that or hurting that. And I'd like to see, the parking is an issue. You know, despite the SPAC consulting folks, parking's definitely an issue, because it's more of an issue in winter, when there's half as much parking. I just don't want to move forward something that's going to cause problems for the neighborhood, and I'd like to vote for something that's not going to cause problems. Don't know exactly how to do it with the current choices, the menu of choices we have, but I would like to see more work done on this proposal.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Would someone like to start things off with a motion? We could start with rezoning. I can't make a motion myself, so I will look to one of you. Commissioner Slack.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item A rezoning.
All right. We have a motion to approve item A, the rezoning. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Lipkeep here.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Sweets.
Aye.
Verland.
No.
So that is five yeses, one no, and one abstention.
Then that motion carries. Moving along. Commissioner Slack, would you like to continue?
I'll move staff recommendation for item B, conditional use permit.
We have a motion to approve item B, the conditional use permit. Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any further discussion on item B, the conditional use permit? That's a conditional use permit for height. We have a motion to approve. Hearing no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to note that, given the likelihood that this is going to be appealed to the committee that I chair and that I'm a council member, this puts me in a little bit of an upper position because I'm voting twice here. So I just, I'm trying to do my best to vote the way that I think makes sense, but I'm just acknowledging that I know this will come to the council, and there may be new information that may change my vote, or the overall context may change, and so I'm, that's just a statement for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you for clarifying. If there is no further discussion, clerk, please call a roll.
No.
Sweets.
No.
Slack.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Lipkeep here.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
So that is five to two.
All right. Then that motion carries. Next, we have several variances. Maybe we can take some of them together. And Commissioner Slack, would you like to?
Yes, I'll make a motion to take all the variances together, items C through H, and recommend staff approval.
All right. We have a motion to approve items C through H, the variances. Is there a second? All right. We have a second. Commissioner Kronzer.
I think it's appropriate here to require a valet service for the, the restaurant here. It sounds like there's available lots in the, in the area that would accommodate maybe even more than seven parking stalls for the restaurant. So with that, I'd like to add a condition to item D, the variance to reduce minimum parking requirements, and that condition be, the applicant shall provide valet service for a minimum of seven vehicles off-site for the restaurant space.
All right. We have a motion to amend the original motion, adding a condition to item D that a valet service be added for a minimum of seven vehicles. We also have a second. Is there any further discussion on that amendment? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion to amend the original motion carries. Is there any further discussion on the original motion? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, I kind of wish we had more time to work out some of these details. I am a little concerned about the overall bulk of the building and how that's showing up with the FAR and the yard variances. So again, that seems to be an area of a question of, is the building, because again, this is even in the C-3A zoning envelope that's, that's allowed, is the building kind of too big for the site? So that will be informing how I vote on the various variances.
All right. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, we have a motion and a second to approve items C through H, and clerk, please call the roll.
No.
Sweets.
No.
Slack.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Lipkeep here.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Bender.
No on C. F, G, H, I on D and E.
Just to clarify, is that captured sufficiently? All right. Okay. And that, well, you can tell us the.
Well, it carries, but it'll take me a minute to write down all of the.
Well, it carries, but it'll take me a minute to write down all of that.
Okay. So that, that motion carries. We'll have the roll call in a minute. And finally, excuse me, item I is the site plan review. And Commissioner Slack, would you like to take a crack at that one?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item I, site plan review.
We have a motion to approve the site plan review. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Cronzer.
Aye.
Lipkeep here.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Squeezie.
No.
Vreeland.
No.
So that's five to two.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item 11. And our next item for discussion is item 15, and staff is dismissed.
Item number 15 is for the property located at 1624 Washington Avenue North. The property is owned I-2. It's in the medium industrial district. The site most recently was the Old Colony Gas Station. This was purchased by Holiday and is presently operated under Holiday, and has been rebranded recently. Historically, there was a filling station on the north half of the site since 1932. The south half of the site was used originally as residential, and then was converted to a scrapyard from the years 1973 to 1983. It was determined to be a superfund site between 85 and 89. The Environmental Protection Agency hired contractors to remove the debris and excavate the soils and declared the site remediated. In 1996, several land use applications were approved in order to allow the Old Colony site in the configuration that you see it today, in addition to some extended hours for operation. The applicant is now proposing to redevelop the site, so to remove all of the existing structures, canopies, et cetera, and construct a new single structure, a single story, about 8,500 square feet, which includes a car wash. The proposed gas station or automobile convenience facility would be located at the southeast corner of the site. Plating of the parcel would bring the front yard to Washington Avenue North with corner side yards on 16th and 17th. In addition, oh, an automobile convenience facility or gas station is a conditional use in the I-2 district. So the redevelopment of the site requires a new conditional use permit. In addition, the applicant is seeking a CUP to allow for a dynamic sign to allow for display of items to be sold at the property. And then finally, the new development requires a site plan review for an automobile service use. Staff has received several public comments provided by both the applicant and then additionally provided by the North Side Residence Redevelopment Council, which you have in your packets today, and then some other things, letters that were submitted along with the staff report. Staff is recommending denial of all three applications. I'm just going to identify the findings for which, under the CUP, and then go right into where alternative compliance is required for the site plan review. So if you could turn to page five of the staff report for the first conditional use permit to allow for the land use. Staff contends that although there are several policies consistent with the comprehensive plan, we are most concerned that the location of the building is inconsistent with city policy, and it really kind of drives the additional term of compliance required due to the location. The site is essentially a gateway into Minneapolis if you're exiting off of Highway 94 or Interstate 94. This is a view essentially from that intersection of what the property would look like. We had originally asked the applicant to consider moving the location to the opposite corner of the property, the northwest corner of the property, to kind of anchor the building and kind of provide a more pedestrian and transit-oriented look to this type of a land use. So staff feels that the proposed design in the opposite corner is inconsistent with urban design policies, including screening the off-street parking from, from the public realm, locating the building in such a way that it reinforces the street wall, and that overall, with the location of the building, it impacts the landscaping and the traffic. And it's less amenable to pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Under finding number six, through the denial of the site plan review, so in all other districts or all other standards shall comply, staff does not feel as though the conditional use permit for the land use complies with six, finding number six. Similarly, staff found under the conditional use permit for the dynamic sign, we were not able to approve that conditional use permit through the denial of the site plan review. Now I'd like to walk through the areas for which the applicant is required to obtain First, as I've mentioned so far, is the building location. The, the building is required to be within eight feet of the front property line. That would be Washington Avenue North. It's approximately 70 feet setback from Washington Avenue North. So we feel as though this location does not reinforce the street wall or maximize the natural surveillance or visibility of the facility, and it doesn't facilitate pedestrian access and circulation. The applicant has stated very, in their argument, that it's the location of some onsite issues related to environmental concerns on the property. So I'm going to just show some of these attachments that were included in your packet today from the applicant. So these, these two attachment, one and two, have identified the problem areas, which is predominantly at the southwest corner of the site. We had asked the applicant to come to committee of the whole, and they certainly had agreed back in January, and you can, and many of us were present for that conversation, and you can remember that staff also was indicating the preferred location with the consideration of the environmental issues. Again, brought us to the, the most appropriate location for the building would be at the corner of Washington and 17th, so the northwest corner of the property. Again, under that same piece of alternative compliance, again, just identifying this as an opportunity site, as a gateway into Minneapolis. And staff is therefore recommending that the planning commission deny the requested alternative compliance. In several of these items today, if alternative compliance is denied, that there would be substantial site plan changes required, and therefore, that's really what has led us to the denial of the application as a whole. So under the second alternative compliance, a reinforced street wall, I think that's also, again, kind of best identified in the site plan. We see landscaping amenities, and ornamental fencing is proposed by the applicant. But again, setting the building back so far, we don't have the opportunity to reinforce the street wall. We do recognize that Interstate 94 is across Washington Avenue North, if you will, but again, this is an opportunity through the redevelopment to move the building in a more appropriate location consistent with Chapter 530 site plan review. On the elevation, we see facing Washington Avenue South, there's not an even distribution of windows. Several of the windows shown are blocked either by signage, and then the trash enclosure is kind of an unfortunate location between the building and the front lot line again, and also adjacent to the corner side yard. Staff does not find as though there are amenity spaces between the front lot line and the, the proposed building. Again, we have landscaping and screening, but there is nothing else, recognizing that essentially it's just the parking area that is what's visible. Pedestrian access, I identify the point approximately here on the plan that shows the pedestrian connection, if you will, from Washington Avenue North to the, to the sidewalk that runs in front of the building. Staff feels as though that's insufficient. The onsite parking location, it's very visible in the present, in the proposed location and would be visible from all three street sides. There are blank walls on the east and west facades that are a little over, or that are the distances stated above. Again, due to another site layout, active functions are not provided along the, the south street. It's all storage areas, you can see, indicated here. The site is insufficient to canopy tree, both as a landscaping requirement and also the requirement to provide one tree per linear, for every 25 linear foot of parking lot frontage. Again, due to the location of the building, almost the entire site is parking lot frontage, more or less, and they're insufficient in trees in that regard as well. Under crime prevention through environmental design, the site layout does not promote natural observation or maximize the opportunities to observe people from the adjacent public space from the building. And then lastly, onsite filtration. We feel as though there could be opportunities to gain some onsite filtration through even some curb openings to allow some of the stormwater to be retained in some of the landscape yards. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions of staff? If there are no questions, I can open the public hearing on this item, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Michael Cronin. My address is 8809 West Bush Lake Road in Bloomington, and I'm here representing Holiday Station Stores. I'm joined by Dave Edquist, who's the manager of real estate for Holiday Station Stores. And we also have three of our neighbors, or two, two of our neighbors here, as well as a representative of the West Broadway Business Association. And I think they would like to speak at, at some point in the process. I think everyone, I know everyone that we've spoken to on the committees, we've met with our neighbors, everyone else, wants to capture this investment to replace the old, old Colony store with a new super, with, with, with a new Holiday store that meets the standards for amenities, design, and is large enough and, and basically oriented enough to give us good service to the entire North Side. We think that's important. Unfortunately, staff is willing to forego this investment simply because the store is not placed in one corner of the, of, 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 of the site rather than the other. Staff states in their report that staff finds that the applicant has an alternative location of the building at the corner of West, well, Washington Avenue North and 17th Avenue that meets the requirements of the building location. And that's certainly true. At the, at, as, as a result from the challenge from staff, we, we basically prepared a plan that, 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 that did that, and we presented that at the committee of the whole. And lo and behold, a rectangular store does fit into the rectangular corner of, of, of the, of the site. However, that's not the only test for Holiday. To make the investment, they need to make sure that the store, the filling points, and the car wash all work together and to, 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 to basically enable them to build the store. And that site plan, as we said at committee of the whole, does not work. So the question before you truly is, do you want a new store at that site or not? The option is not one of the many possible other site plans in the future. The option is, we'll just continue to operate the present store. And that's, that's brutal, and I hate to have said that, but that's where we are after a year of working with, 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 with people. So we can assure you that the plan that's before you tonight is the plan that can be built. And only a plan that can be built can, 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 can basically gain the, gain, gain the benefit, benefit, benefits. And Holiday, Holiday hasn't come to this easily. We've worked with the staff for over a year. They've been very generous with their comments. We've worked, we've met with our neighbors. They've been very supportive of getting something changed at that site. And Holiday has been able to find at other sites in the city a way to make this happen. And that, and that really is important to us. And we, and we've appreciated the, the support of the staff and the planning commission and the ability to make those investments in the city. That's important. However, at this site, while we are sensitive to the, to the concerns about, about the public realm, the conditions on this site, both inside the site, which is the pollution that makes it an L-shaped, buildable site without incredible expense with the budget, I can assure you, the budget just can't take a million-dollar hit to move that, to, to move that stuff if we, if, if we, if, if we disturb it, as well as what we think is that the primary and enduring element of the public realm at this site is I-94, the trench and the, and the, and the exit rising, rising out of it. And in this case, I know there's a concern about a street wall, but there will never be a street wall built across from us. It's impossible. And that condition extends almost to the city limits on the north. And there'll be no development there. And so that is our concern. So we, so we, so we believe that this development, our, our development, will improve the public realm immediately with the landscaping, with the fence, with the better sign, with, with the better store, and all, and all the other features that come with us, the canopy, all those other features. Now, we, we also recognize that it's not like we have no responsibility for that corner. We, we, we listened at the committee of the whole and, and are now proposing to extend to basically replace a section of the fence on Washington, a section of the fence on 17th with a masonry wall to further anchor that corner, and then wrap that around behind as a, as, as a raised planer, which enables us to put, to put planting behind the site. So, and while it's not the building, it certainly is a significant statement on, on, on that corner that we think will be a strong statement as people come off the freeway. And, and it also is something that'll be amenity both from, 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 from inside the site as well as from outside the site. And, and we believe that, that approval of our site plan will provide the most immediate and the, and the most important improvement to the, to the public, public realm. And I, and I, as we've gone through this, the issue really is where that building is placed. If you do a careful reading of the, of the staff's analysis in their, in their conditional use permit, they, they find that we meet a number of issues on intent, requirement, those kinds of things. But because the building's in the wrong, in, in their view, the wrong place, they turn us down. The store location has been reviewed and approved by other city departments through the, through the PPR process. The store is ready to build. And so what we ask is that you use the path to approval that's provided in the code to allow this investment to be captured. Section 530.110B allows an exception to the building placement standard. Very simple, may, 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 may approve alternatives to these requirements, provided that where applicable, any adverse effects can be mitigated by a decorative fence, masonry wall, plant materials, and others that reinforce the street wall, which we have provided at this site. Farther down in the ordinance, section 530.80 also mentions those, alternative compliance mentions those amenities as part of the, of the program. And number two says strict adherence to requirements are impractical because of this site or, or because of site locations or, or, or conditions, and the proposed alternative meets the intent of this chapter. Clearly, with the pollution left on that site, it's a unique condition that makes what the staff wants us to do impractical. It will not be built. So what we ask you to do is to join our neighbors, the neighborhood groups, and others in allowing that path to work, to, to, to approve this application. At this point, I would probably talk about some of the comments that the staff made about the details of the proposal, and, and also answer your questions. I don't, Mr. Chair, it might be useful to hear from our neighbors, as long as they are here, because they're, they're really going to.
Yep, anyone is welcome to speak at the public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, they're going to really want to speak to the issue that I've raised and that we did. So I'll just sit down.
All right. Thank you. We should make sure, are there any questions of the applicant at the moment? It doesn't look like there are any.
I think I can come back up after.
Yeah, sounds good. So we can move on to some other speakers, and you can decide who speaks first. And please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rob Hanson. I'm the executive director of the West Broadway Business and Area Coalition. On Monday, April 4, 2016, the West Broadway Coalition Planning, Zoning, and Development Committee met with Holiday Station Store representatives to discuss this project. We reviewed the proposal, had a chance for the community to provide comment on the project, and ultimately, the proposal was moved by the Planning, Zoning, and Development Committee for approval with broad community support. We again met with Holiday Station Store representatives with the revised site plan to rebuild the station in its current configuration. And again, we received broad community support around the project and forwarded that recommendation to our board of directors, and it was adopted at the board meeting in April. The WBC recognizes the importance of the service station to the surrounding community. The development sits at the gateway of North Minneapolis and is often the first business that travelers see when exiting the interstate. An improvement at this site is increased in urgency due to the fire and demolition of the Northern Metals Building just further north on the block along Washington Avenue North. And there's also been some landscape improvements to the building immediately north of the Holiday Station site, so the area is certainly upcoming in aesthetics. The proposed project will provide more services and will improve the safety and aesthetics of Washington Avenue North. For the reasons mentioned above, the WBC continues to support Holiday Station Stores' rebuild proposal for 1624 Washington Avenue North in the current configuration of the service station. And I urge you to reconsider the staff direction to deny approval for site plan review and the conditional permits. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address.
Do I have to stand on these footprints? My name is Amy Ellis. I'm the executive director of Luntston Performing Arts. We moved into the arts condo that's directly behind the new Holiday Station in 2007. And first of all, we're so happy to see the new ownership and Holiday coming in, and the fact that they want to improve the site is very welcoming to us. We serve over 400 students onsite at Luntston Performing Arts, ages three to 23. And it's very important to us to have this business here who's invited us along in the process every step of the way, gotten feedback, and really heard us, and we've heard them. I, first of all, think safety is an issue, and I think having a view in front of you is much better than trying to have eyes on the back of your head. We know we've had people hiding out by our garbage and whatever forever, so I personally like it. I think it's beautiful having the setback and more welcoming. And there has to be an exception to that rule. I mean, you drive down Washington Avenue, they're all set back all the way up, just take a drive. So what do I want to say? I want to say, welcome Holiday to the neighborhood. We can now let our kids go over there for lunch where we wouldn't let them before, and I hope you approve the proposal. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else? Yes, please state your name and address.
My name is George Heck, and I own the business on the north and northeast corner of that block. And I just wanted to say that we definitely support what Holiday would like to do there, and I'd hate to see this investment go away without having an improvement there. And we also welcome them to the neighborhood.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else? Yes, it looks like, yeah, the applicant, you'd like to respond to anything?
I think that's our neighbors. As part of the staff recommendation, in addition to the concern about the placement of the building, which basically is going to stop everything, they also made a number of, they noted a number of requirements, recommendations, and preferences if you do take the path provided by the alternative compliance or the building placement exception. I don't want to go through them all. What I'd like to do is speak to two of them. One is, staff noted that we're short on canopy trees. That will be resolved. We will meet this requirement for canopy trees. Secondly, staff in a couple places felt that we couldn't provide natural surveillance of this site with the building set back 70 feet. And again, we're not comparing, we're comparing it to what's there now, and I don't know if you've ever been in that store or not, but there's no vision outside of it. And I think that the important thing is, is that because we located the building as proposed at the back of the site, we closed all the driveways but two. This means all the active area of the site is in front of the big windows of the store. And so anybody moving through that site is obviously looking at the windows. They're also obviously available to be viewed from Washington Avenue or from 17th Avenue or from 16th. So it works both ways. There's better surveillance into the site as well as better surveillance from the store of the site. Secondly, most important, third, most important is that we have moved the checkout place in the store so it faces Washington Avenue. So our staff will always be looking out over the site towards Washington Avenue, towards 17th Avenue, those areas. So in addition to our security cameras and those kinds of things, we'll have live people. And this is a pretty small thing, but inside Holiday Station Stores, there's always a table and chairs. So if someone wants to stop and drink a cup of coffee or eat a roll or have a sandwich or whatever at a Holiday Store, it's available, and that is placed next to the windows on Washington Avenue. So I really think this provides, and this investment really, really, really provides the best thing. On the others, what I would like to suggest is that if you do it, if you approve it, you basically approve it as proposed, then we'll have a chance to meet with the staff and work through administratively what their recommendations mean and what the best solution to basically accomplish their goal is. So that's what we're asking. So with the neighbors, one of my favorite comments that I got as we were working through the neighborhood was from NERC. And at the close of their letter, they say, "NERC is excited by the project of a first-class Holiday Station Stores in our zone." And I think that's really what the goal is, and I hope you share it and use the alternative compliance or the exception process to allow us to move forward, make this investment in North Minneapolis.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? It doesn't look like there are any. So if everyone has spoken, I can close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have the three applications before us. Are there any further questions? Commissioner Slack?
I'm going to move staff recommendation to deny the conditional use permit.
All right. We have a motion to deny the conditional use permit. Is there a second? You have a motion and a second. Commissioner Slack?
Yeah, I'll just speak to it quickly. First off, I appreciate all the testimony here today, and I appreciate Holiday working with their neighbors and the Neighborhood Association for coming out and providing comments to support the motion. You know, Holiday has a really strong brand, and you've seen, you know, recently within the last nine months to a year that they've purchased a lot of more local gas stations and have done a really good job of, you know, upgrading the aesthetics and access and circulation to a lot of those stores. In my mind, that's what they're going to do here, whether or not this is approved or denied, because they do have such a strong brand, and they're really super conscious about their brand. And so what this proposal does basically is gives them a new building without, you know, really kind of adding that enhanced element. And I personally believe they're going to upgrade the existing building no matter what. They'd probably do some landscaping, new signage, just to meet their brand. And so I totally agree with staff that, you know, for a real substantial change to this corridor, you need to move the building. It's important for the building to at least have some presence on the street. That's the only way we're ever going to make any change, especially in a corridor like this. And that's the only way that it's really going to improve the public realm. Otherwise, we're going to be dealing with the same issues over and over again. So a new building, a new development proposal is the only opportunity we're ever going to get to improve the public realm along the street. And so with that, that's why I made the motion, and I'll be supporting staff recommendations.
All right. Commissioner Sweetsie, and then Commissioner Lukey here.
This is a tough one. I'm disappointed that I don't see really any of the suggestions that were presented at committee of the whole incorporated into this. This looks exactly the same, and I thought a lot of people had a lot of good ideas about that. On the other hand, I think any change for the better is really important at this corner and on this property. To me, what's there now signifies, you know, decades of blight and crime at that location. So I don't know, it's a tough spot because I hear what Commissioner Slack is saying. And again, I am disappointed that none of the other things that people suggested back in January were taken into account here.
Commissioner Lukey here.
Yeah. So I think over the years, I've seen a lot of holidays, and I think you've found that I've been pretty much a proponent of a lot of the things that have been requested that even have gone a little bit against staff recommendations on things, but I think that there's compelling reasons for exceptions. And I even, when this came to committee of the whole, I was a little bit thrown off because the building is located where we don't really allow anybody to locate a building throughout the city, which is the back of the lot. But I was clinging to the hope that there'd be something phenomenal happening at the corner. I think we talked about like electric charging stations, something that was new and fresh and actually was a boon to north that maybe other areas don't already have as much, certainly that we don't have already as a resident of north and as a former checkrider outer to the Luntston Center. So seeing this tonight, I was disappointed and underwhelmed a little bit because I've seen Holiday and other gas stations have much more challenging, compact sites where they're made to do this, and they achieve it. They find a way to make it happen. And I find myself thinking, this site is pretty huge, and it's really, and when they say opportunity site, it's an opportunity site. Everybody exiting 94, whether they're going to north because they live there like me or whether they're going downtown, is going to stop there for gas. I mean, it's awesome. It's a shame that the one that's there right now is such a problem, Old Colony that is. But I find myself thinking, what isn't working? Because it seems as though the contamination is primarily located at the southwest corner of the site, which I get, but I don't see why that would prohibit the building from being located in the northern corner with the exception, when I've been doodling, of maybe the fact that the car wash is attached. So I find myself thinking, why aren't we separating these? Because we've seen that most recently at the site over in northeast by Brassa where it's separated, and it actually makes for an interesting feature on the site. And that tucked away in a corner isn't as weird because there's not really eyes in it anyway, and moving the storefront to where it can be more interactive with pedestrians is a boon. So I kind of feel as though there are some steps that need to be taken, and I wonder, like, I know that it's better than what it is now. I mean, it's there now, it's awful, and I stopped going there many years ago. But I kind of have to myself that that's not the standard for development in the city, and certainly then not for north. Like, better than what's there is not good enough. So I hope that Holiday isn't going to wash their hands of it and do nothing with the site. I can't imagine that they would because it really is a phenomenal location. I mean, a piece of real estate that you get stuck at the red light every time you exit, and you sit and stare at the site. I mean, it's, you tend to be better positioned as a gas station especially. So I would hope that they were able to go back because I can't, even after all my support of Holiday over there, I can't find myself supporting this one, which makes me sad because the renderings look great, and obviously, you thought was given as to where to put the monument sign and whatnot, but at the end of the day, it isn't something we would allow in other areas of the city. And even though it's better than Old Colony that's there now, we can't settle for that. We have to settle for the same high level of quality and design that we would anywhere else. And I'd hope that Holiday, or that, yeah, you guys, your corporate office can actually gamble on. I feel like it's maybe a gamble. They're going, well, this gets you outside of town, all these concerns about north. And I would hope that they would kind of go, you know what, this area's awesome, there's a lot of potential things going to happen in the future. There's a lot of awesome things happening now where people are, like Luntston Center, are really digging their heels in and saying, no, we will do this awesome thing here no matter what. So I would hope that they're willing to actually take that kind of bet and go, you know what, maybe we're going to lose money on it, but maybe we won't. Maybe it'll be something that'll, you know, rethink the way we do gas stations in urban areas altogether. Because this is kind of a generic, like suburban rubber stampy gas station, and I feel as though this isn't an opportunity like no other that you will get in the metro area. So unfortunately, I cannot support this application tonight, but I am hopeful that we will see phenomenal things because I know you guys are capable of doing it because I've voted in favor of quite a few of them over the years, that you will. So I don't think I've rambled enough, but I'm begging you to please give it another shot because I think that there is something here that you can really give your architects some leeway to sink their teeth into and really make something totally extraordinary for the north side especially.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Any further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to deny the conditional use permit to allow for an automobile convenience facility. Clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. Next, we have items B and C. Commissioner Slack?
I'll move staff recommendation. I'll make a motion to move staff recommendation to deny the conditional use permit for dynamic sign, item B.
All right. We have a motion to deny item B. Is there a second? Motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. Finally, item C, the site plan review. Commissioner Slack?
Motion to approve staff recommendation to deny item C, site plan review.
And we have a motion and a second to deny item C, the site plan review. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item 15 and concludes our business for today. We have committee of the whole this Thursday, and our next meeting is June 12. We are adjourned.